Hi, Kevi and Stuppa.
Calling in order tonight, obviously we call Rollford. Do you have the all board members on your team this evening? Thank you. First item of the night is approved for the agenda. We'll have a chance to look at the agenda for this evening and motion to approve that agenda. Let's present your board package tonight. Thank you. Second please.
I second you.
Thank you. Call Rollford.
Carter, yes.
Yes.
Maddox, yes.
Yes.
Peter Meyer.
Yes.
Weitzel, yes. Worley, yes. And Jesus.
Next, we have our actual items coming out of closed session. Just had one. The agenda to approve, the closed session, it has been from September 17th. Has presented the board package tonight. Motion to approve those items. Thank you, Lisa. Second please. Thank you. Call Rollford.
Carter, yes.
Yes.
Maddox.
Yes.
Peter Meyer.
Yes.
Worley, yes. And Jesus.
Yes. All right, we're back in communications. You have the news report. There's a lot of people there. We'll get the news report.
Yes, Mr. Gray already has. It's all clear now.
That's all, Worley. Good.
Good evening. Tonight, we've brought our third place boys state cross country team. Our fifth grade girls state cross country team. What did I say?
You called fifth grade.
Sorry, not fifth grade, fifth place. Yes, fifth place. This is our head coach, Ryan Staley. He can talk a little bit more about the team and all the rest.
All right, well, first of all, I want to thank the board, of course, the superintendent, Ruby, for having us here. Both the boys and girls had outstanding years. For the very first day out at South Park this year, which is where our new course was, we were a wild life for so many years. And we made the switch to South Park, and it was one of the best moves we could have possibly made. The park itself was very generous to us, during the crew, Bob Erickson, and those guys who worked with them. But the kids came out and really took to the new course, and I think it's something we can take to the future possibly, hosting a sectional, and this and that. But that aside, getting back to the very beginning of the year, we had 112 kids out of cross country. It's a lot of kids. But at the same time, we had a lot of good talent and a lot of great kids. And that's what makes it all special. I knew early on that we had two good groups on the girls' side and the boys' side. You just don't know how good. It started off, beginning of the year, very first invite, the girls had lost to Normal Kingsley, and the boys lost to Normal Parkside. So, of course, everybody kind of takes a step back, and like, "Well, you know, we've got to evaluate where we're at." But you know what? These kids came back that next Monday and started working extremely hard and never ended up until the very end of the year, which was the state meet. And it was all worth it with the girls finishing fifth, and the boys being able to hoist a third place trophy. We had a great mix of eighth graders and a lot of young talent. When you have that, you have something special. And like I said, I couldn't have been more prouder of either group. It was a lot of fun to watch the girls this year. On the 11 meets that they ran, they've won nine of them. So, when you do something like that, you know you've got a special group. At the very end of the year, I know they wanted to do a little bit better than fifth place, but there was a lot of fast teams out there, and you know what? We left it all on the course. So, I was extremely proud of my team. And like I told them, and I'll tell them then, and I'll tell them again now, it's not what you do in one day that should summarize what you do in a season. It should be a body of work. And like I said, when you go into 11 races, you win nine of them, that's a pretty impressive body of work. And on the boys' side, you know, they kind of played second, fifth all year to Normal Parkside. Every invite we'd go to, Normal Parkside would take first, we'd get second. They get all the recognition, but quietly, we're having a great season. At the very beginning of the year, the margin from Parkside to us was pretty big. By the end of the year, it was minuscule. All right? And that's attributed to the kids' hard work and what they were able to do every single day of practice. In every meet, we had a chance to run against them. Like I said, the season probably would have went on another two weeks, and I still think we would have taken Normal Parkside. But you know what? I'll take a third place trophy at state and a fifth place finish by the girls any day. Great season. I had a lot of fun. Hopefully, they did too. And for those coming back next year, obviously, we're going to try to take another step to try to better what we were able to do this year. And those moving on to high school, I wish them the best and luck, and they have a great few years for us this year. So, thank you. And at this time, I'm going to go ahead and say their names and come up and get their awards. Eighth grader, Kelly Con. Seventh grader. Let's get right up here. Here you go. Seventh grader and all-state performer, Katie Curry. Seventh grader, Darby Dixon. Seventh grader, Savannah Dutton. Seventh grader, Joe Eastman. Eighth grader and a tremendous leader, Donna Hanson. Seventh grader and our number one runner most of the year, Katie Held. Eighth grader, Josie Fresky. And a seventh grader, and once again, a great leader, a tremendous talent, Carly Smith. Number six grader, Sandra Fresky, you couldn't be here. All right. Now, for the boys, eighth grader and our number one runner from the very first day up until the last day, Logan Katz. Eighth grader, Colin Kramer. Eighth grader, Will Hanlon. This young man was on both state teams, obviously, as an eighth grader, Chase Law. Our number two runner and a great talent, a seventh grader, Dayton Mateen. Seventh grader, Michael Hyden, Dre Mateen. Seventh grader, Pila Tula. Seventh grader, Cooper Peterson. Seventh grader, Niko Scott. We can have all these kids coming back next year, so that's good for us. This young man stepped out of the shadows this year and really got a tremendous year, and I couldn't be more prouder of him. Will been also. Ladies and gentlemen, your thirteen cross-country teams.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, we move on. Kerry, you've got one more.
We do believe you. We have a nomination for NFHS Coach of the Year. And is Mr. Life here?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Life, come on up. Yeah. And so, the girls soccer Coach of the Year, I don't think Mr. Work is here tonight, but come on up. We want to recognize, and can you tell us a little bit more about this? So, we were a little confused about, there's a nomination to the national.
Somebody's.
It stands for national female? No.
National high school.
Federation of.
Federation of high schools.
Federation of high schools. Okay. So, do you know the next steps? I mean, this is because, obviously, a great season and career.
Somebody who's confused and digesting all this, deciding is maybe they have anything else.
He's so humble.
But now, I guess they take it to a regional level.
Right. Excellent, excellent. Well, it's been, oh, there it is, National Federation of State High School Association. So, we, you know, I know Mr. Cop can actually speak personally from experience on how great you've done for us. We appreciate all that you do, and wanted to, again, recognize that and make sure that publicly we can show that you've been nominated, so we appreciate everything.
He is very, very, very nominated. Stand on that very firm.
Well, I just wanted, one of my assistant coaches wasn't able. Kelly Brody, she was in the county, but my brother Gray and Kyle Frankie, those guys, when I, we tell our kids, anytime that kids get an award, all-sexual, all-state or something, it's due to the team. And this is, to me, is a coaching staff, and including the players, because without the kids that work hard, the parents that support us, and without my assistant coaches especially, it shouldn't be the same person, because there's no way. Especially this year, this is pretty my wife, who's been sitting on every, when we went to the state tournament, she was in the hospital just after baby, so.
Yeah.
So, we were, I was in Naperville weekend right after she just had a full child, so it's a big blessing to have her, so.
He's a family member?
Yes, very awesome.
Well, we appreciate all that you guys do. The success that you've had. Thank you, Dan. Thanks for coming. Thank you, Kyle. Thanks, Kyle. That's all.
All right, moving along. This is an opportunity for visitors to address the board about any agenda topic tonight that we wish to address the board tonight. Okay. We'll move on to our consent agenda items 6-1 through 6-9 in your board package. Does anybody wish to pull any of those out for individual consideration tonight? If not, then take a motion, or I'd like a motion to approve our consent agenda 6-1 through 6-9 in your board package. Thank you, Lisa. Second please.
I'll second.
And call Rollford.
Carter, yes.
Yes.
Maddox.
Yes.
Peter Meyer.
Yes.
Weitzel, yes. Worley, yes. Jesus.
Yes. Next item we have is our personnel consent agenda 7-1 through 7-19. Does anybody who wishes to pull anything off for individual consideration?
I'd like to pull 7-17, and then I have a general question that applies to all 7-2 through 7-19. It's just a general question, so I don't know anyone.
Go ahead with the question. Go ahead.
Okay, my question is, on the personnel consent items listed, are all of these positions merely a replacement for, you know, a position where someone had resigned or terminated, or are there any new additions within this list?
None of the positions that are on there are any positions, they're replacement positions of people that resigned.
Okay, now, there was one item here where a seasonal grounds person, 7-12, was, you know, transferred to a full-time special needs. Okay, was that one-half time position then an increase, or just a replacement of a previous one-half time?
Just a full-time special needs position, not a half-time. I take, I forgot, there is a position on here, special needs aid. We had two movements, I believe, students with IEPs that needed.
So, 7-12 is another half-time, is that?
So, is number, is 7-12 basically an addition?
7-12 is a full-time special needs aid at Normal Elementary. Only the person that was mistaking that position was in a seasonal grounds position.
Correct.
With maintenance.
So, that is an increase of one-half position then, correct?
Yes, because it is a full-time special needs aid that is.
Correct.
It's due to a new student.
That's what I saw.
Yes, I apologize.
No, that's fine. So, now, so that basically needs to be added as a change from the February 2013 budget changes.
Yes, that's correct.
Reductions.
Yes, that's correct. There are, there are two events.
So, with the exception of that statement, there are none others, except, I have a specific question on the memory and number of understanding.
You want that to be pulled off, right?
Correct.
Or not separately?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions on 7-1 through 7-19 excluding 7-17? Pull 7-19. Pull 7-19. All right. Anything else? All right, then we have motion then to approve our personnel consent agenda items 7-1 through 7-16 and 7-18. We will consider 7-17 and 7-19 as separate items. So, any motion to approve that? Thank you, Steve. Second please.
Second.
And call Rollford.
Cop.
Yes.
Maddox.
Yes.
Peter Meyer.
Yes.
Weitzel.
Yes.
Worley.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Jesus.
Yes. All right, 7-17, this is an MOU with the BCPA regarding a medical PE statement.
Correct.
Okay. You have questions on that?
Yeah, I have some.
Okay.
How was this handled in the past?
It was actually done within the PE department, but physicians were cut in that department, and they still have to provide the medical portion of it. They have to take another class by a physician, so they'll have to provide the credits for that class. So, they will be doing their work with the in-house detention supervisor, but that person needs time outside hours to prep for the class, write papers, because they have a prep timer at the day if they want to do that.
Okay, so, once again, I ask this question. We had these budget reductions in February of 2013, and so, this, we need to add back in, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, so.
It's only an hour a day rather than a full-time.
I know. But my question is this, he doesn't have a degree in education.
Yes, he has a certified teacher.
Okay, he does have a certi, okay.
Yes, he has a certified teacher.
Then, what is the number of days in the school contract? Is it 180 days?
First teacher's gonna have it.
So, why are we going to pay him in stipend for 180 days when he didn't start at the beginning of the year? Why do we pay?
Has been doing this since the beginning of the year. We've just been working with the BCA to come up with a way to compensate for doing this. We've had nobody else to do it.
This, okay, so my question at hand is this, if we had a brand, to me, he, he's worked how many hours, how many years did he teach?
I have to go back and look at his personnel file, but I believe that he had four years is what we gave up.
How many?
Four.
Okay, my question is this, why are we, he is, at full-time rate, he is a non-certified employee member, correct?
He is an in-house detention supervisor, which does not require to be a certified teacher. So, that position is under the BCPA, and is an hourly position.
Okay, so, is his hourly rate, I'm trying to, his, the annual stipend was based on his...
An hourly rate of paperwork teaching. It was converted from it, from where it would place on the salary schedule as a certified teacher, that was converted to an hourly rate in an hour-stick for the year, for one hour a day.
If he was teaching now, if he was still teaching in our district, he would be at an MS plus zero.
Right.
On the salary.
Correct.
Pardon? The four-year check.
So, then, we took that and made that an hourly rate to accommodate things.
So, okay, now, we cut one full education teacher, correct? Is that what we did?
The PE, so we did a little bit of a...
Jill?
We didn't replace the...
We did replace the timing, but I thought we also...
Yeah, but you cut that too.
You cut that as well. So, we kept, because we remember he was in this position or...
Okay, so, for, okay, so, we need to add that back in to the February 2013 proposed budget cuts, because I want a running total of how we're changing this.
Yep. We can add that in one hour.
That's fine, because we're easy to, we need to keep a running total of what was made in February. I mean, it's a fluid schedule, there's no doubt about that, but we just need to keep current on how these numbers are changed. Okay, I'll make a note too. Thank you.
And I have one thing, on the addition of the half-time special needs, we are required by law to provide special needs aid. So, if it's in our IEP, yes, we are required to do that. So, regardless of what our budget looks like, if we have special needs child movement district, correct, as an IEP, correct. And would that be a secondary position as well? Medical. We have to provide the PE required in order for them to get their PE credit or whatever. So, yes, we do have to provide that.
Some things are planned, some things are unplanned.
Right.
Plan for both.
Exactly.
Okay, any other questions on 7-17? The motion then to approve item seven, that one's seven, in our personnel consent agenda tonight. Motion then, please.
I'll make that motion.
Second please.
I'll second.
Call Rollford.
Yes, Carter, yes.
Yes.
Maddox.
Yes.
Peter Meyer.
Yes.
Weitzel.
Yes.
Worley.
Yes.
Jesus.
Yes. All right, the last one that was pulled is 7 dot one-nine, is the 13, 14 insurance renewal. Here's the Cliff Meltzer.
I've seen that quite a few times with Troxel trying to make changes to the plan so that we could get the initial 34% increase to train down something that was more reasonable for employees. And United Healthcare, the lowest they got to was still near the 15% increase, and it was just, it was open that cost, and ended up that Blue Cross Blue Shield came with a slight reduction to premiums, and then even with the Affordable Healthcare Tax that was going through in January, it still kept our premiums pretty even to what we were paying with United Healthcare. So, the committee then met, the PE negotiations team, and decided on the means to switch to Blue Cross Blue Shield. We did an employee informal poll through email to find out, engage in just about employees wanting to do, and it felt pretty comfortable with Blue Cross Blue Shield, we were within many, many years, prayers to switching. And then, insurance came in with a 9% increase to dental premiums, and United Healthcare came in with an overall reduction in various, we had the, we were not inclined to do some reductions, so, we came to the negotiations table and decided to switch to United Healthcare.
And this, this is a yearly, can be, a year, a yearly issue, and there's a committee with administration and the, and these...
Teachers, support staff, administration, and then if we had to switch companies, we could argue, so we should also go to work on the decision. We don't like to switch here, but it's a lot of work to do, but.
Forced our hand here the last few years.
I think they have, unfortunately, insurance just is fine for us.
Well, we'll have to watch it closely, well, as closely as we can, because the ACA is a cluster, and most brokerages don't even understand it either.
Troxels have a decent handle on it.
They seem to be okay, but I've, I've talked to several firms as well, trying to understand it, at least from the dollar, but they all give you different answers. And some of the insurances themselves don't even know, so, but you guys have...
I think the law itself is very confusing, so the legislators that try to offer the decision, so it's just, it's a very confusing law, and we are trying to navigate, and Troxel has a very good, uh, for us on everything that we do and when we need to do it, giving us a practical...
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. So, we then a motion to approve our personnel consent agenda items 7 dot one-nine or 13, 14, insurance renewal, as presented this evening. And Brad, second please.
I'll second.
Call Rollford.
Carter.
Yes.
Cop. Yes.
Maddox.
Yes.
Peter Meyer.
Recuse.
Weitzel.
Yes.
Worley.
Yes.
Jesus.
Yes. All right, thank you very much. Let me get into whole business, and the first item is our construction update. Dave?
I'd like to reiterate this, Mike Keller, he's not talking about the construction update.
Yes, this item, and you'll recognize what's in front of you, this one, which was a unit for, for the whole, for the project here, it's been several months now, but the new schedule is wider and longer, but it's, it's also in your board, in under, in board docs too, for you, so you don't have to keep a paper copy, it's under construction objects.
The one that you have in front of you is just slightly different than the one that's on board, as we mentioned previously, this thing changes a lot. It gets updated at least twice a month. The one that you see in front of you has a shaded column going horizontally across the page. Those are the projects that we have filed out, paid out. And that was a suggestion that Jim made, and I think it's a good one, you'll be able to focus on the projects that are not complete. Obviously, the additions, they're going to go on well into next spring, but some of these other ones, I expect next month, but you'll see probably three or four more of them. Most of the work is done, some smaller items still remain to be completed, but it's pretty much down to completion of paperwork, and that's sometimes the hardest part of the project, to get it over with. Construction changes wise, we're doing very well across the board. We actually went backwards a little bit, saved a little bit of money. There was a couple of credits that we took on a couple of projects. At Ball School and GIS, we backed out the lightning protection that we have designed in. Basically, that lightning protection was going on the addition part, the remainder of the school was not protected, so we decided, and since the rest of the school wasn't on any radar stream for any near future, we're going to back it out, save a little money. So, it works both ways, we've saved money as well as spent, ready to be as frivolous as we can. We are paid out across the board in phase one, looks like about 55, 56%, and a lot of that cost is still left in the addition projects that we're building up. Anybody have any questions about this church?
When we, when we complete these, Mike, when we complete these, for example, when we replace, as you said, we're waiting for paperwork on some of them, and that's got to do with walkthroughs, make sure everything's done to satisfy our satisfaction, and also warranties and that sort of thing.
There's a litany of paperwork that they have to turn in, bonding, all these projects are all bonded, bonding company has to say, it's okay to pay these guys, you know, they're not aware of the outstanding bills that these people have and anything. Record drawings they need to complete, turn... Record drawings they need to complete, turn, turn in to us, warranties, you know, any projects that have warranties, you know, come out one year, they have to, it's a, it's a paperwork process, all operations and maintenance manuals, all this stuff gets turned over to Dave. It takes a long time sometimes to get a, to build a fire enough, a lot of times contractors will fill out everything but their profit in the project, and sometimes that last bill that you see, it's like pulling teeth just to get it out of them. But we, you know, we hold their nose to the fire, and we don't, we don't pay out anything prematurely, and obviously, they'll never pay out anything for any work that's not completed. It just takes a little while sometimes, and we're not, we're not bird dogging them all the time, you know, we're not chasing them around, you know, we owe them money, and that's in your benefit, you know, that's, you know, if the work's done, and we still owe them all money, you know, there's nothing wrong with that, if they're not going to come and ask for it.
But ultimately, we will pay them.
Oh, yes.
I mean, you know, errors happen, but we owe them that money.
That is great.
So, we will pay them.
That is great.
Voluntarily at some point.
That is great. When, when all of their seminoles and paperwork and everything's in order, they will be filed out.
Sounds great.
Any other questions on this report, what's going on, so far, any additions?
I'll go, give, go ahead and give an update on the additions, starting at G E S, moving fairly well. The brick is complete on unit D, which would be the south wing, and then on units C and A, I'd say we're about fifty percent on each. You notice the front, the areas you can see from parking lot are, are complete, and they're just having windows, and just some roofing material on top, but we're progressing well, we're getting ready to put in some temporary windows with some plastic to heat the area for finishes. We already have the first coat of paint on unit D and C, so we're moving fairly well on that. Kind of lagging behind on unit A, we're still waiting for our screen wall, big monstrous thing to go up on the roof, but it's not heard any progress or anything, we're just not as far along as we could be, so, and then we're moving through case work, to be a little beginning of this summer, so we're moving very well on that. Over at G I S, we got the envelope on the building, roofing is, I'd say sixty percent, seventy percent complete, and again, we're going to temporary, put temporary windows in with some plastic, and get some heat going, so we can start some finishes, drywall taping and stuff, so, moving with that. Ball is about the same, same way, we're, oh, we got probably forty, fifty percent of the roof complete on that, and then again, put temporary windows in to start finishes. So, we look to, this week to start the air barrier and the flashings, they're going outside, and then start burning, so, we're moving fairly well on every single one. I wish it didn't have to rain for the next three days.
Well, I think we got a lot of work inside. See, anything else, Ford?
No.
Any questions? I assume everybody's been by the building, at least looking from the outside, you can see across this house. No more questions?
Thank you, Carter.
Dave, you don't have any?
No.
They covered it, actually, well. Okay, good, all right, thanks. And the next item we have is our board education goals, and as the board knows, and I think Brandon and Susan were, were guests of the board when they were not on the board yet, when we went through these goals, we established these goals, so that, what we wanted to do tonight is just get some, to make sure that these are still valid goals that we're looking at, a lot of the duties, and just kind of make sure that they're still, still what the board is looking at, still, still valid goals, and we'll be out here a few more hours. They are, also, we haven't, we haven't rated them yet, I don't think, we haven't prioritized, and that's what I'm saying, so, not that we're going to do that tonight, we just wanted to have some discussion about...
Primarily, the finance committee is looking for some feedback in terms of the finance, I think neither of us can take it around now, but if there's any areas, you know, these goal areas that anybody wanted to talk about, but I kind of wanted to hone in on the fiscal goal that is set, and whether or not we need any more, just, you know, any more conversation about that. It's going to be hard, because really, we would probably do this in a retreat, where we have several hours to really sit and talk about them, like we've done in over the past couple of times, but sort of that, I thought, we'll put it on the agenda to give an opportunity for anybody to kind of share thoughts on, on the goals.
Well, I certainly appreciate the fiscal attention, I think that making conversation in an environment like this is really difficult, because we're here to educate our kids first, and if we don't talk about achievement first, and then how to manage your budget to your achievement goals, at least that's why I'm, I, but it's the end of, you know, what we need at night is really hard to do that. I prefer to try to do it, but not dedicated to it much.
Can we consider this for...
But Dave, wasn't our financial objectives our number one? Am I remembering that correctly?
Correct.
Number one, two, or three? Okay. Well, do you want to make a comment about our discussion in the finance committee, where we wanted, we really wanted, from your standpoint, we needed the strategic financial goals first?
We've been, I think, drifting a little bit in our finance committee, working on scattered projects that, the first one started with cleaning up the report on, on G E S, and then also continuing to work with Patrick on the audit, continuing progress on, on cleaning that up and making the necessary changes to move toward better financial statements and clean up reporting. And then we moved into some of the reports, the treasures report, trying to make sure that, that they were a little more user, user friendly, and give a better handle on, on that. So, we've come a long way with all of those, we met with our friends over at Rochester to see what they were doing, and turned that as an observation of what they were doing. And, and now we're, we're back here, and I, I think it's important to decide what, what the role of the committee should be, what projects, what initiatives should be undertaken, and, and really, we're kind of pushing it back a little bit to really move through the board goals that we talked about, and what we finalize, to the strategic goal, and goals of the, of the district, is to incorporate some more financial items, in terms and goals within the strategic project. And, and one of the things, kind of where we are now, is to try to develop some forecasting tools, and some graphs or spreadsheets or something, and Patrick's working on that, we've got some access to resources, but we really don't know what kind of long-term impact, we're looking at some P M A graphs, and some other of our, our financial partners, on what they're projecting, state board information as well. But we want to make sure that what we're doing today is keeping us on the path to, to get us to tomorrow, and for the next board, the next board, and the next generation. So, right now, it's, it's, we're to the point where we're starting to drill down into maybe some administrative responsibilities, administrative functions, and I personally want to make sure that we stay at the board level, so we don't get too far into Carrie's job, or Patrick's job, and we'll stay, and it's important for us, for me at the board level, to stay, you know, on the board and working on the district, we're not working in the district, we're working on the district, and we have our professionals in the classroom, and then the administrative office to do that job. So, rather than Susan and I kind of bouncing around in here, I think that we need to have some, some kind of specific tasks to work on. In the past, we had committees brought together with a specific purpose, task, and goal, and that scope really defined, like, or that helped us define the scope of what we were doing. You know, Patrick's looking for a little bit of direction, rather than just showing up with a lot of reporting and not knowing what we're going to ask for or want, so, I think his time will be much more efficiently utilized, if he knew exactly what we were trying to, to accomplish. And also Carrie, her hands are full, and primary responsibility is to the educational excellence, educational excellence of the district, we want to keep, or focus on that, which we're all focused on, on that, so, kind of a summarization. The other thing is, I, I need to get a better handle on what type of minutes we need to take at the committee level, you know, high-level summary minutes, or, or in detail word by, by ordinance, because we're somewhere in between right now, and as I read some of the accounts, and I did not put mine in yet, but as I read some of the accounts, I think we're missing some of the comments made by Patrick in the meetings, some of the comments made by Carrie in the meetings, and this...
In the September meeting?
In all of them, you know, I think that the, the minutes are, are, they're, they're not a summary, and they're not verbatim.
Correct.
Accounting of, so, only, only bits and pieces are covered.
Okay, so, looking at those construction minutes that were presented, were they too high-level summary, the ones that we just looked at?
That's my question, there's a big difference.
Correct.
That's my point, there's a big difference between the minutes of the construction committee and the minutes of the finance committee, so I think there needs to be some consistency as to the, the, the level, the type of, of detail that needs to be out there, making sure that we're properly accounting for everything that's, that's being discussed, but also not churning out twenty-page reports that is covering progress with detail.
Did you see my revised minutes? So, version two is okay?
No, I thought that, that missed some of the stuff that Carrie, Carrie, Patrick were talking about, well, at, at least recognizing the...
Fine.
Word that, that Carrie's been doing, that Patrick's been doing, and one was, before you were here, we were looking at some of the Rochester documents, and there were a cost-benefit analysis, or what, what's a description of a, of a task, what's the financial impact, and how much does that come, what's the, what comes out, what does that do? There were several pages that Carrie had prepared last year during our, I think, similar to what we see in other reports, so we want to get that...
Right, I guess one of the questions at hand is, and, and, you know, this is where we need some perspective and some feedback from you all, and that is, one of the observations I made was that the Rochester process for budgeting was much, it was a more interactive process, in that last year Carrie would, you know, relay a lot of their budget concerns and ideas through interim boards. And, I mean, the ideas get across, but it's much harder for board input to occur via interim boards, and I particularly found the Rochester methodology more appealing, because it gave board members along the way to have input, ask, ask questions, and granted, very much so, the board members as a whole got some more detailed schedules. And they, I mean, I, I just thought it, it gave, it gave, instead of, at the end of the season, presenting one budget, or making some assumptions, and conducting everything via email, it could be more of a verbal conversation. Now, that would take, you know, that's a change in methodology, and actually, my preference was to do some, some of this at the finance committee level, and then bring it forward to the full board. By necessity, that means that as a board member, you get to ask questions that may require that you have some details available to you. You can't evaluate the effectiveness of the budget unless you see the surrounding numbers. Now, by nature, that means that you're probably going, these high-level summary reports are not going to be the answer. The other thing that I would like to re, just relay is, whenever the decision is of the board, I will abide by it, although this is not, I mean, I know it's within the administration's sandbox, and we're not supposed to interfere, but on the other hand, the finance chair of the Rochester School Board, who's on the finance committee for twenty-two years, and would felt that there was a need to delve into the detail twenty-two years ago, he did so, and then when the time was appropriate, he backed off a little bit. Now, personally, that's the role I would like to take, but if you all think it's too intrusive, then that's fine, I just need that instruction. So, now it's your time to say, I like the idea of having a more interactive approach, I don't mind if we can recognize we've come to some compromise. Like, I could study the audit reports, but that, I could study the audit reports, but my clear understanding is that there were some heartfelt discussions among board members along the way, at the committee level, but I very much agree that we owe Patrick and Carrie some guidance, starting with the definition of what the finance committee board members are supposed to do.
Well, twenty-two years ago, you said that this Rochester board member began his examination of Rochester's...
Well, I, I did add, add all, I did add all of the summary information, but he felt there was a need, once he came on the board, he felt his need, the need as a CPA also, to dig into the numbers, get some handle on the numbers, and then make some changes. And that was, actually, that was the role model that I...
And they do not have plans for it, correct? Just not, so they didn't...
They're right at the end of the time.
No, well, I don't know if they did or not, but the superintendent certainly twenty-two years ago was primarily responsible for the generation of the numbers and...
Just typical of a small district.
So, I mean, that's the first glance, that's, that would help, just defining our roles.
Sure. Sounds like a lot of people need some direction from this, how soon are we going to try to get this finalized?
I mean, we can get here whenever we're here, so. What's that meaning?
I think we need to get it finished, because we've been dragging this thing on for months, so, I don't know how long it normally takes, but I think we need to get it finished.
Yeah, I agree, I don't think we can, I don't think we can direct anybody on anything until this is finalized, and the fiscal remains.
Has the meeting that we have to discuss this, which would include the financial, is an open meeting, but then anyone could attend and get their...
Committee meeting is technically an open meeting also.
Hasn't this been done like a, a day-long activity in the past?
Well, yeah, we did it for three hours, or two nights.
We need to do that.
Oh, yeah, I agree with you, it's not like, you know, we have a ton of stuff to deal with.
I, yeah.
Well, but doesn't this get guys, everything that goes on in this district?
But the line is definitely, that everything else is easy, that it's still...
Let's move on with that, please.
Well, if we, if I could just make a comment about my idea of how the committee should work, is the, the board members, the committee should be run by the... work, is the board members, the committee should be run by the administration. They are the ones that set the agenda. They're the ones that have the information to present. You have a board member or two represented on those committees that then would take that information back to the board or meet as a board and determine how we want to have it done, how we want to have it react, the interaction between the administration and the board. But it's not, in my opinion, it should not be necessarily a more run committee.
Okay, well, that's fine. I mean, I'd like to hear from other people, too. It's fine.
Well, I guess where I'm at with committees, not necessarily that it's more run, but I think we have to set parameters and then cause the committee to move forward, which we, I don't think we've been able to do either. And back to this, yeah, might be a good idea, because the board's got to provide some guidance on how it gets started and then run it from there.
But it's, you know, the way we do the construction committee, you know, that's, you know, this is information, but this isn't the only information that's out there. If you look at board docs, there's other information out there concerning our meetings. But basically, the two board members sit on that committee, but it's run by Dave Murphy. And with input then from our architects and the construction folks and that, so Cory and the guys you see here tonight are the ones that, David and I and Cory and Mike Zeller are the ones that provide the information to us. We ask questions, we ask, you know, a number of questions at times and make sure that we're, you know, and like I said, you know, this, that, this report here has been drawn through some changes just so it's easier for everybody to take a look at, so we're not rehashing the same information meeting to meeting. You know, make it, make it obvious that some of these are done, so we don't even have to go back and look at them, and they're done, they're paid out. We don't want to take them off the report because they're part of the bottom line of that 35-minute dollar, but we don't necessarily have-
Correct. And this is a very good example, because you have reports provided to you. It just happens to be by outside parties. You are looking at the detail, correct? Right in front of you. And you're looking at it and you're making comments and you're asking questions. If we don't have the detail as board members on the finance committee, we cannot have a comparable role as you have on the construction committee. You have the detail. It's presented and, you know, gathered by, as you say, the architects, O'Shea, Dave Murphy. You have the detail. We have nothing unless we can get some more of the reports at a lower level.
But which Patrick has offered.
Correct.
Out of Skyward, we just want, we just need to give Patrick the direction of the level of detail on one of his reports, which would be the same.
Right.
So, we're trying to just pull all these, all this great information together and build a goal out of it, so that we all know what we're trying to accomplish. The budget process should be initiated with direction, not specific direction, but with general direction from the board. The budget should be developed by the administration.
Correct.
And then brought back to the finance committee, which is a representative of the board, that for any questions, any comments, that sort of thing. But it should not be driven by the board members on the finance committee. That's up to the administration, to Carrie with her department heads and her, and her folks. We give, we set the, we set the parameters, but then it's up to the administration then to come in with a budget within those parameters.
I agree, but we need to, either it comes through the finance committee, actually, I think it should come through the full board. When Carrie puts together a very initial draft, we then start asking some more detailed questions to her based on our strategic goals. We won't have enough answers unless we see how some of these budget numbers are put together. I mean, you know, what are your assumptions? You have to say, what are your assumptions? You look at that assumption relative to your strategic goals. You say, does that assumption appropriately or most effectively hit to this goal for this year? If we don't have the detail, we can't ask those kind of questions, and therefore, we as a board are not meeting our responsibilities, which, as you say, it's to provide the financial direction and future of the district.
Well, I think Steve's right. Until we finalize our goals, we can't just call it. Because, you know, every single one of these goals costs money. It's just the way it works. So, you prioritize, you know, you say what your goals are, prioritize your goals, and realignate your resources. It's free, you know? And then you say, well, it says right here, we're going to provide professional development in this one goal. You're seeking, or we want to step more highly qualified, right? That's more money than regular qualified, effective, competent, and safe and professional growth. We want to hire teachers who want professional growth, we have to pay for it. So, it's just kind of all of those together until we have the goals for what we want.
Well, in fairness to Carrie and Patrick and everybody else, and Rick and me, we're not sure when the strategic meeting is going to be set up. Meanwhile, time is ticking away.
At what?
I'm working on this budget. I mean, at this time-
But that's, the administration's responsibility to work on the budget.
Our role is to say, we want a balanced budget, or we're willing to not have a balanced budget in order to accomplish this task. I see that as the direction that we need to give Carrie, to provide a budget that will then be reviewed and questioned by the finance committee, that will then come back to the whole board. Okay, then, we need to do all of that within a five-year strategic plan. Absolutely. It's in the IASB literature. You need a, you need a five-year forecasting plan. I haven't seen one yet.
Well, we have, I mean, we've been shown.
If that's a deficit reduction plan, that can change year to year.
What can't change year to year?
Well, okay, then let's make this a goal as a suggestion. Stay out of a deficit reduction plan for five years, because you can go in and out of a deficit reduction plan. Within a five-year period, you can be out one year and in the next. And what's wrong with that? That's bad, because like the big red flag that your finances are in a strong position. File that with Eleanor at the ISBE. It's a big red, it's not good.
And I'm not saying that we should do this, but what I'm saying is, is that we need those deficit goals on what we want for our district and everything else follows.
Well, my, my point is, you got to stay in business to meet those goals. And I think actually Steve made that comment. We don't have the money to, we don't have the money, but we have to make choices within the money we have. And I think that's where the goals will give us the direction, rather than those choices. Correct.
So, I guess specifically on that, from a financial budgeting perspective, what is the timeline that is appropriate in the sense that, and this may be the way it normally is, but it's not the way I normally do things. I mean, we were approving a final budgeting, something happened to the school year. So, when is the, my idea of having an approved budget would be long before the school year starts.
The struggle that we have with school financing as a whole is that you're, that's exactly the predicament that all school districts are in, because you don't always know what your allocations are going to be. You don't know what your general state aid will be and, you know, your revenue streams. And so, we do, you know, because they all grapple with it.
Well, I guess, I guess from that perspective as well, it confuses me, because if we've, if we've set what we want to do for the, that sounds more like, let's find out how big the pot is and figure out how to spend it, versus saying, this is what we want to spend on. Let's figure out how to get it done.
And I think it's actually cool. I mean, it's actually cool where you set priorities, and that's exactly what we would do here, where you have goal areas and you set priorities. And what I think Lisa's talking about is that, you know, you say, are we willing to give on this to save this? And it's all, you know, it's all years, within which you're constantly looking at, what are the priorities? What does our community value? And so, there are things that I think the community is willing to spend more money on than other things. So, you do both of those as well as wait to see what is, you know, so you're, in my opinion, you're doing both at the same time, where you're waiting to see what are our final allocations going to be for revenues. But in the meantime, you have said, this is our priority. We believe, you know, a priority is being able to offer A P force and support, you know, that we have some, so you say what your priority is, not maybe down to that level of detail, but you say what your priority is, and this is something that we're willing to do, even if it costs more money. Offer pre-K is maybe a good example. We believe that early childhood is important. Now, we don't always know if we're going to get our pre-K funding until sometimes August. I mean, you just, you don't always know what happens as far as pre-K funding goes, because it's a competitive grant now, so Jill has to write that grant. And we've been fortunate that we've been able to get that grant. But we have said, the board has said in the past, we are willing to, if we have to, we're willing to fund pre-K on our own, because we believe it's a priority for our at-risk children. Now, we'll fund it maybe at this level as opposed to what we'd like to fund it at, but we as a district, even if our funding doesn't come through over the summer, we still believe that it's important to have those teachers in place and to offer that program to screen those children and have them, so it's, I think, I mean, pre-K is a good example, where you say, that's a priority that we want to make, even if it means we're spending some of our own money. And then something else probably has to give, because you can't, you know, you're constantly doing this. So, in my opinion, both of those are happening at the same time.
Well, and I think what you were saying about the community, too, class size, elementary class size. If we get 200 kids move in and we end up maintaining what we have budget-wise, but we end up having 28 kids in a kindergarten classroom, that's where our priorities have to kick in and say, no, we're not going to have 28. We can't predict that. We don't know how many are going to move in. We don't know how many special ed students, students with special needs move in that require additional aides and additional teachers and things. And we, some of it is driven by law in the area of special ed. And, but some of it is based on what the community has said they want our priorities to be. And we have to do that. And I agree with that. And, but in that regard, then, since there's uncertainty about the general state aid, where you've mentioned it can be as high as 89% or as low as 85%, then it seems to me it's our obligation to put together scenario one at 85% and, you know, it'll be tough.
I saw the data. Actually, we had to correct that for the finance committee meeting, and we weren't able to get to it, because we had other conversations and, so those are, those are exactly, you're exactly right, where you say, you create the assumptions. And so, we go on, one assumption is 85% for a ratio. So, you say, this is the assumption. If we get 85% for a ratio with an E A B increase of, you know, 3%, 2%, then you put those scenarios together and you say, that is what you build this on, and then you start saying, is there, where is the, so it's kind of, you're doing all of those at the same time, where you're balancing what are our priorities.
And then you have to take those strategic goals that we define and put it together for each scenario. And it may well be that you do well in accomplishing, you know, strategic goal number letter A on the highest revenue, and you do very well on that scenario relative to your other priorities, and you do very poorly. That's the reality. We have to use those three scenarios. Exactly. And I think our budget, I can recall budget conversations, that our revenue is estimated low, our expenses are estimated high. And I think the scenario reporting would be helpful to know, if this is what our scenario is, this is what we're going to spend. If this is what our scenario is, then this is what we're going to spend, rather than just saying, we budget on a five-month.
I think that's why it's important that these meetings are driven by, and the agenda is driven by the administration, because those are things that, and these are smart people who've got, who are doing this, and they're successful as they are. They know what needs to be done. They know when they need to do it and how, and how it needs to be done. So, I think that's why that has to come from the administration as far as, as far as the agenda, what's, because we've got some things we have, and we're behind now, and I think for a variety of reasons, we're behind now from where we were a year ago in putting together the budget for next year and putting together and looking at positions and looking at personnel positions that we've got out there, just because of-
Okay, well, that's, that's good. There's no reason why the budgeting process can't start and, I mean, can't continue like right now while they're waiting on, you know, further direction from us. And I, I'm, that's, the majority of the board agrees with you, Jim, that's fine. But then the second question I would like to say is, the board as a whole needs to have the opportunity, I believe there are people on the board besides me at the moment, who would like to have some more interaction along the way before it's just finally, you know, the draft is finally submitted at the board level, as it has been in the past.
Well, that's not exactly true, though, because we've, we've always, in the past, it's always been a process that we go, Carrie will develop, started at least in the last two years. It started to develop the budget, brings it back to the board for perusal, then it goes back, we kind of take a look at it and do our thing, and then, which, you know, is yay or nay, or take a look at this, take a look at that, and then they go back and look at those scenarios and bring it back to us.
Have there been a lot of questions, because that even-
Absolutely.
There was, I don't have a lot of these to compare to, especially for these columns. This is going to cost us much. Where are your priorities?
Right.
Correct. Now, I mean, what, okay, I guess my, my, my point of needed clarification is that what this is done during interim reports, it's very difficult for board members, you know, to sit down and write emails and ask questions, given it shouldn't, it might as shouldn't be done in interim. It should be, Carrie should set aside, this is the time that we're talking about our budgets. This is the scenario for 85%. This is the scenario for 87%. What is it as a board, as representatives of the community, do you want us to emphasize or cut, or what is it that we have to do? But it should come from there.
But that's taking it to the board level with a little bit more than what was done last year.
And, and I don't have a problem with that. What should be generated from the administration?
I think the difference is, when Susan's talking about those, I think, I have a feeling, and I'll speak for you, that you were talking about personnel. And I didn't specifically for a reason come out in public and say, I'm cutting the associate principal position at the high school, until I was certain that we were going to do that. Those types of conversations I did keep close, you know, to the board, because I didn't want to alarm someone if we weren't going to do it. I didn't want, you know, so that, that conversation, when we made that personnel reduction, we did keep that somewhat close to, close to our conversations through interim reports and things, and I didn't release that until we were certain that we were going to do it. So, I think that's what, we had a lot of discussion, but it was, yes, but it wasn't a matter of coming out publicly and saying, in August, I think we're going to do this. We didn't do that.
Okay.
Until we gave, because we felt strongly that it's most important that we give that personnel, the person that is in that position, the opportunity to understand what was going on before it became a public issue. So, we didn't openly spell out specific positions and fill the script. And that was why, because it was a, it was more of a personnel issue.
Well, so, there isn't any reason, I mean, I can't think of any reason why you're impeded not to start in on your 85, 87, and 89% scenarios.
I think we hadn't started last meeting. I didn't get to it, so I think that we're moving now.
And I guess the way that, from my point of view, I don't know how others feel about it, but, you know, if, if these different ideas and the different topics of what's important to the board as a whole should be broad, so in other words, a sample budget would be broad, you know, Patrick could present to all of us, and then we would say, okay, Patrick, we do in the finance committee meet next, and you guys can work on, this is what our priorities are. So, in other words, the finance committee is second to the board as a whole, saying these are our goals, not the board, not the finance committee telling the board, this is two of our goals, this is the president's, that we will say.
Or telling the administration. Okay, it sounds like we better have this financial strategic plan meeting this Saturday, right?
That would be great. That would be great.
Because we, we owe it then to get going on at least this, well, we owe it to, you know, tie the pieces together really as quickly as possible.
Well, I think we've got, I think Kerry and Patrick have got some stuff that they're, that they've been preparing.
Yeah, I reviewed it, it's very good. I reviewed all of it, even though we brought side tables.
Well, some of it wasn't presented yet. It hasn't been presented, a lot of it.
Well.
Well, then it will, I mean, it's.
Yeah, we won't.
No, I'm just kidding about this Saturday, let's just get it done. So, can we look at our calendars? Kerry, did you give us some dates that you have available? And do we want to have Larry, we don't need to have Larry, there's a moderator.
We don't have to, but, because you drive from pretty much your goal areas.
We have to pay for Larry there.
Uh, we do.
Well, then let's don't get.
The first, I think the first one was free and then.
Yeah.
Instead of taking the time tonight, let's, why don't you just.
Send out some dates that you're available.
Send out some dates, and then we'll, we'll coordinate that and then we'll, we'll be going. But I think it's important that the administration goes ahead and does, does bring up or get together and come up with these scenarios. It's a good idea, and it's what you've done in the past, depending on what happens with the future.
And I think your assumption on what is important to our community is probably, you have that, and we will review that, but I, I think you probably know what is.
Okay, okay. All right, we got to instructional, Title I parental involvement policy.
This is why we're here, so we already have some business to keep that in mind. The first item is the Title I parental involvement policy in compact for each school. The Rady Interventions just did a phenomenal job of leading a team to develop policy with teachers, administrators, and parents. And so they're very similar in nature, and I'll need to have somebody sign off the meeting to serve through the new year meeting. So I am asking for approval for these policies. And there is, I mean, for Title I, there's a major component with working with parents hand in hand. Interventionists pull two meetings of year, and need parents throughout this whole year.
And it is required by Title I?
Absolutely. There's a lot of things required by Title I, and this is one of them. So we will do this on an annual basis.
Can you add an action on this?
Yes, we do.
You bet committees here with teachers and parents, it's according to the policy.
Yeah, and we use the, yeah, we use the date template, so we follow the little letter.
Would this best be included in the policy?
Probably not necessarily. Because this really is a full level.
Anything you want to highlight on it?
Just that they, there's a lot of hard work that I miss.
Any questions?
And, you know, our interventions do a phenomenal job.
Having experienced some of those meetings, the interventionists do a valuable job, and it's unfortunate that there are not more parents to come. However, any that we can get will be the benefit of the child in school.
We, we really don't have enough interventionists, so I'll just answer that. We have 194 students that receive their support share in Title I.
And how many additions?
That's the more that we have, that's the most we've ever had in Title I schools.
How many additions?
Um, well.
105 for 100, for 100, still a good.
I mean, we need more. I know you don't want yours half, but.
Well, I think that will be something that we'll need to.
I, don't worry, I'll be there.
Yes.
The grant pays for four of their salaries this year, so we, we do receive in Title I money, 373,112, and we are able to pay for four salaries out of that, so we are fortunate that we keep, because we give that grant.
And then, there's a lot of information that you can say with the Title Grant, how, what it's based on? The number of free.
Well, it is, it is based on the number of free introduced and what are teaching addresses, so that's what's, so. We also pay for resources and professional development for the Title I interventionists, and any teacher who has Title I students, so a lot of our PD comes over and supplies, so.
Any questions?
The grant pays for summer school, my friend. Yeah, we haven't had summer school in the last three years, but it could. And it does, and it does transportation, choice transportation too. I can write that in the history.
There's homeless funds.
Yeah, there's about $1,000 to help with the summer side, so we were able to put the materials into their homes over the summer. So, Tricia, we've got a provision coordinator working the librarians on that. There's a lot of things to be done with this plan that we never got any more to do for.
And there's a patient for that, for working on this stuff, and the P D and or the.
I was thinking.
Any questions or comments?
That grant is, it's a lot of work, it's a lot of reporting, yeah, but it's, it really helps our kid. Helps everyone, helps everyone, but particularly those students.
And they're really promoting at the Title I conference, the cynical pull-out service and the push-in, and they've been doing that every year, but they're really, this year, really stepped it up. We gotta look at that. And our, and our interventionists are, their schedules are impactful.
So that's a big change from where it used to be, so it's a welcome change because they didn't used to value the push-in as much as the pull-out, that's where traditionally was, was in a pull-out program.
But the push-in takes a lot of planning so that you don't, I mean, so that you make good use of the two teachers in the room.
And I have to.
One isn't a teacher, one isn't a.
Right.
They're both teachers.
And I have to compliment our principals because we also, last year, put in a day meeting Monday with their administrators and talk about how the kids are progressing. And so they have, every month, they have a report that goes to the principal and myself, and so they discuss where the kids are at and if they're making gains or not.
And those gains are measured by what?
Different class aims and, and all of our universal things that we do, and then they're, and they're individual, what they do with them on a weekly basis. So they partner some monitor.
Anything else? Any questions or comments? Motion to accept the recommendation to approve the parental involvement policy in compact for Ball, Chell, and Leonard Elementary Schools for the 2013 working school year.
I made that motion.
Thank you. Second, please. Second, Mr. Steve, Paul Roelz.
Peter Meyer.
Yes.
Whitehall.
Yes.
Worley.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Maddox.
Yes.
Misses.
Yes.
Next thing, it was a pre-K update.
Well, pre-K update, remember last May, we actually had a pre-K teacher that had moved out of state, and we decided not to replace that position, so we moved five teachers after four. We have 90 students currently in the program. Between May screening and August screening, we had 184 students screened. So we were initially, last year, we were able to take 120 students, this year we're down to 90 because of the four teachers. We've had six declined spots, and we have a waiting list of 34, that's the most that we have on our waiting list. And we have 14 of those students are ELL students that are in our program. So risk factors are, they're ELL, homeless, brain reduce launch, high-risk pregnancy, single parent, drug use, behavior concern, and services from a social agency. So those are all the risk factors that are weighted. So we've got a lot of, a lot of kids that need services. This is another grant-funded program, and it only pays for two and a half of those teachers plus an aide, and that grant is 220,704. And it does pay for a part-time, 20-hour-a-week parent coordinator as well.
Of those four teachers, how many are early childhood special ed students?
Um, one. We have the piece for benefits, classroom supplies, professional development as well, professional development supplies, student transportation, for pre-Ks taking out of their snacks, travel for home visits, parent resource materials, and screening access. So we're very lucky to get this as well, on all schools' purposes.
What did we, how much money did we save by not rehiring or not replacing?
Salary salary, so roughly 15,000 probably.
Oh, we also served 31.
We could, yes.
And just, you know, and you've got to remember, we've got early intervention students too that are coming to our doors too, so we have to, so. We'll go over the 90, we're saying more out risk for special ed services are needing those services, so they need some early intervention, so we service those students as well.
And hence requirement, as they love, and we take those students with them.
Well, at early intervention, early intervention, at three-years-old, they are eligible for school if they are determined to be special ed. And they may have right now.
And some just come for senior services, so.
So is early intervention, the evaluation of early intervention, is this a first step for getting into the pre-K program?
No, that, no, the first step is you got to go through this screening process.
Well, but if they, if they are early intervention, they're determined to be special ed.
Correct.
They come at any time of the year. So they, they can.
It just depends, I mean, they, we had two show up last week.
Yeah, and you have to take them.
You got to take them.
Yeah, you have no choice but to take the ones that are in the top.
So it's another one of those things that you just don't know.
Do you still, you do inclusion?
Yeah.
In all of the classrooms or for just one, in one?
Well, Jill, next year, as you know, the board committed to the community that we would have pre-K in each elementary building. What kind of plan, we got four teachers, three buildings, and we, what's, what's the plan? Have we got a plan? I know we got a plan.
I have somewhat of a plan. The principal and I have talked, I mean, it depends on the screening of those kids and the others of those kids, I'm worried they're going to go and everything else. The problem's one being, the screening being held in May is fine, because you can do a lot of planning around if they send. The problem is the screening in August, because Jim Markins feels very strongly that in order to meet the child find obligation, we need to have another screening. So either we move it to late July, the plan is we're going to have to move staff around a little bit.
It requires that.
If, if the kids are at risk.
We have a requirement.
Is there a requirement by?
Yeah, they are risked.
The gap of risk.
Yeah.
So if we keep it at one location, that solves the problem really for.
We're going to have to move staff around. But, but the issue is, I mean, it's going to come, fortunately, transportation determines a lot of things in the system, unfortunately. There's things that, that's a whole other topic to get into. I don't know, I mean, it would, you would have to cross it out, and I can do that.
Yeah, because I, I kind of did it, you know.
It may be budget neutral.
Correct.
We don't, we don't know, it's going to, we don't know what it's going to be until we identify the students, where they live, how they live. If you've got.
I mean, I can take this year's students and say, here's your scenario.
Correct.
And do that. I mean, it was interesting, when we split up kindergartners that were in that program last year, it was equal.
Right.
It was amazing because Cindy and Jim produced, our transportation produced the list, and it was almost, I mean, there were one or two different, but that may not happen.
Jill, can you explain the benefit of a child taking pre-K and then sending them to a new environment?
Well, there's no transition, I mean, kids, kids are affected by transition. I mean, it's hard for some students to make transition than others. The less, the less transition is the better. I mean, the research will tell you that if my kid doesn't have to transition, which we heard a lot about that when we wanted to talk about boundaries, you know, it's hard on you to make transition. They were already in their home school, things would be familiar, you have, you have those, less stress at the beginning of the year when they're transitioning kids. It just makes sense.
And, and a large component of the grant is parent involvement.
How absolute.
After report, report after report after report on parent involvement because they are at-risk kids. Well, if you give parent involvement and they're all at Ball, what incentive for all that parent involvement to then make it, have them go to kindergarten and GES, you have to start all over again? It'd be better to have the parent involvement, he's at the school that they're going to be in, so the parents can be involved with him.
Yeah.
Early, they could be involved.
But on the other hand, there are some positives. I mean, I will tell you, the staff can find some positives to this argument, so.
Staff will buy.
The staff, the pre-K teachers, I have to say, the pre-K teachers very much would like to stay there.
Absolutely, they would. They've been together years and years.
Well, they, they've all changed since you've been, so this is a whole new state now, and so.
But change is not, change is harder.
Change is hard, but I have to put that out.
Is change harder, harder, and does it affect students more to do, to make that change in this for those students?
Oh, yes, you're right. So what is your opinion, Jill? Do, does the opinion, do the, do the opinions of the teachers outweigh, in your mind, the transitional difficulties of a child? I mean, the teachers, do you, do you think that the transitional, possible transitional problems of a child outweigh what the teachers' opinions are as far as this working?
I don't think it should be a Jill Larson decision. I think it needs to be, if you want to study and that's what you want to rock and do, I'll do it, because it takes a team to do that. I mean, I need to talk to administrators, I need to talk to teachers, I need to talk to transportation. I, I've done some of that work, but I still think it's going to come down to transportation sensitivity. So unless you as a board want to say that we're not going to let that dictate the budget.
Everything.
But it's, having a three-year-old.
Ride a bus.
Ride a bus for an hour and a half or two hours a day is not, it might be.
But we should at least look, I mean, I'm a numbers person, and we can't, how can you make any, I mean, maybe the numbers favor Ball, and once everybody looks at the numbers and then we ask you again, what do you think?
I will have a recommendation, but I think it needs to be.
You're the numbers person, and we're glad to have you. I'm a kid person, and we're glad to have you.
Correct. So we're counting forward as well.
We're auction people.
Could we have a report that moves like all of this?
Absolutely.
Jim, you mentioned we made a commitment to the community that we got a. That's one of the reasons that we added up the, Blunderwood Elementary, so that we could move. The board told the committee we were going to have.
Yes.
That they would go back to their home schools. When did we do that?
During.
When we were looking at building Chell or Blunderwood Elementary. Because we, if you remember, we were going to have, we were going to have a pre-K wing on, on GES, and because of budget, we cut back on it with the, with the understanding that, to the community, that we would add on to that building as soon as we possibly could to allow pre-K then to be in all three buildings. So it didn't make any sense to have pre-K in only two out of the three buildings. So we, that was a commitment that the board, board made in the community, that we would have pre-K in each, no entry building.
Does that, okay, I have a question to ask you. Does that mean that a lot of time has passed between 2010 and 2014 when this is going to be addressed? Does that mean we take the opportunity to just reevaluate that in 2014? Or do you, when that commitment was made in 2010, it's not changeable? Which is it?
No, I think we should have Jill study and then talk more about it.
I mean, informational, isn't, I mean, we're just doing this informational. I mean, we always talk about what we promised the community, what we told the community, we don't want to go back on it, and I'm back on what we already told them.
Correct, but.
But now it's okay to do it.
No, I'm saying times have changed economically.
But our, but economically, they have, the board also made a commitment at the time that, that we were going to fund because of the value of the pre-K program for our it is such a vital part of those, for those students that, that are having those difficulties.
And we did respond to the budget, in that we didn't hire that extra teacher. And consequently, there are thirty-four students who are on the waitlist that wouldn't be on the waitlist if we had maintained our teacher. But it was a budget decision that we had to make. So I don't think we're saying that we're not going to make budget decisions. I think we're, what I'm saying is, we need to make sure that we're not sacrificing one for the other if there are alternatives that can be made.
And I think that, I can come back and give a moment with that.
Would you survey?
Because I, yeah. I mean, I think that we're going to make a decision or make a statement. We'll find our way to get that.
Had we surveyed our, by that, what they wanted to make, our pre-K in each school, but have we got a, really understanding?
We didn't do a formal survey, no.
We just committed to.
There was, well, we, we, again, the data shows, the information shows, that these kids do better in their home school. It's better for them to be in pre-K in the school that they're going to be for the next five years after they're on pre-K.
That's just something we all.
Well, the research shows that, I'm sure, Jim, but Jill, you were shaking your head. Did we, did we, you know, ask for parent involvement?
In 2009, not to my knowledge. Now, we surveyed parents about, what they think of our pre-K. So I don't, I don't recall them being.
Well, and you were in the position to read them too, so.
So were they, Carrie, you were in that position.
I have a love to see you.
I guess what I was trying to say.
What are the selling points of GES? Get pre-K in all schools.
Yeah, that was one of the things, when Lyndon and I would go out and talk to all the different community groups, parent groups, in, in early 2009, when we were running our own campaign, was talking about exactly that, that this would bring pre-K back to the nation. That's part of our discussions.
There's probably a lot of stuff.
It's easy enough to ask.
I have noted that we will come back to you with information about, to make sure I've got everything in one address. Research on the effect of transitions on pre-K children, or student at a pre-K level, the cost of transformation both ways, parent and staff involvement, certifications of teachers, so the flexibility for inclusion opportunities.
And then whether or not the parents were surveyed in 2009 or not.
Doesn't matter.
But actually, when you do the cost, costing analysis, what you need to do is actually
look at what that, where that child would go in their home school. That child is going to go from home to her home school no matter what. So really, what you need to do is look at just the round trip difference between the home school and law. Do you see what I'm saying? If they were going to go to their home school, they would travel those miles anyways. So what the extra, it's technical, I mean, what you need to do.
Except time-wise, because he might have to look at routes to home and rest.
Correct.
He's got soccer for him.
Yeah, he's got soccer for him. That may make it a question, if he has to add routes to serve.
Well, if there are pre-Ks that pay. So you've got, you've got routes in the middle of the day.
Second annual, are we done with that? Second annual ABC's report. This is your invite to ABC Parent Act, the elementary PTOs, and us come together, and we did this last year. So this is a night, and you can see that the invitations went out to the parents, and they get to pick which topic they would like to attend, and we've got lots of our internal experts presenting on all of those. So dinner is provided, so that's Chen's room, we host the event, so feel free to come by. And you don't have to schedule here, but ahead of time. Just want to extend that invitation to you.
In Chen's Elementary, it's for all of the schools.
For all the schools. One went hosted it last year, Chen's went and hosted this year, and then Ball hosted next year. So it's, we turn a K-two this year, K-two parents, so that's our target, target audience. This is a joint effort. Erin and Brian have been really great to work with.
Any questions? Last one, under instructional, is the school.
The next one is disinformational about what we do during our school improvement days, and I have to tell you that there's never enough time to get everything done. The principals, the third staffs focus on school criticals, and those are literacy and literacy in relation to common core, PIS, instructional domain, best practices, differentiation, and review data. You're going to hear a lot more next Monday during our school improvement meeting. It takes major coordination in all of our buildings to plan out where the literacy and professional coaches are going to be, the numeracy code, the special technology department, or the special ed department, because we rely on them to be our internal experts and provide that professional development, so I think kudos to them. And then we also, during our school improvement days, also tap outside resources, and so sometimes we do take field trips or bring in outside experts to assist or staff. So I just wanted to make sure that you know that when we have a school improvement day in the calendar, that it is, means twice. There's meaningful professional development happening. I mean, I have parents occasionally stop me and say, what do you do on those half-days? And so I just wanted to make sure that you know what we do on those days.
The next one is on.
Financial treasures, financial reports.
So we share your regular treasures reports through the month ending in September. Revenues, expenses, analysis, I don't want to start anywhere. I don't have any areas specifically highlighted at this point, so there's no anomalies or anything specific. Got your new charts that show you where we were visually in comparison to the last year of all the revenues and expenses and our analysis, which I know for a couple of them will be bad. Also, at this point in time, is the cash flow analysis, and maybe I actually just want to take a look at that. Again, this is just an analysis, it's a draft of, you know, the cash flow, last month, production and supply. Which, this is the most recent one.
I don't know why. There you go.
So PMA takes our annual financial reports and our budgets and our treasures reports, all our treasures reports, the most, all of the last year, collected into an analysis and gets some basic assumptions, what do we think revenues might do over the next couple of years? How do we think expenses might be over the next couple of years? We think our ABA will be over, they take some of those assumptions, put it together into a model. And where you see the heavy green areas, that's cash on hand, they try to maintain some liquidity, so in case bills or things come up, you have enough cash on hand. So the white yellow means your possible options for some investments, although short-term. So where you sort of see three mountain peaks, if you will, the highest points, and then they peak down, goes up each one of those a year, so it's like three years what you're looking at here, where you start to see the darker blue, that's potential where you've got cash on hand a little bit longer, and you could possibly extend out your possible investments longer, longer. You can extend out of your cash, the better interest rates you're going to be receiving. So where you dip below the zero, where they've got us in the April-May range dipping below zero, is that they're saying there's potential in there where you may dip below with enough cash on hand to pay the appropriate bills. Sometimes you can offset that by delaying some bills if it's possible with hundreds. Majority of your spending though, courses, salaries and benefits, that's something you can delay. So how revenue sources actually occur throughout the year, whether the state's on time, whether they're delayed, whether you receive other income, such as sale of your land, all weigh into how that eventually plays out. This is a projection of where your cash looks like based on your previous expense reports, but also your budget, you know, and what, and what the trends are when you're receiving tax money, when you receive general state aid, all goes into their formula. So you can see, sort of keeping the assumptions the same, each year we dip just a little bit lower and a little bit lower if we don't continue to make some corrections. So as we look at the FY14 budget, we take this into mind, we did put up the chart from my steer, if you want to, show it again, but we showed this back in February, March. This was the cash flow one I put forward. At the time that we were preparing the wisdom with that, it seems much more red. Clearly, a lot of more opportunity, we were going to be very short on cash had we not made the decisions that the board made at that time to make the reductions they did. So you can see, the earlier you can make any of these budget cuts or reductions or changes in how you spend, have a drastic impact further down the road. So we did some great work, and you made some tough decisions, but you can see the immediate benefits of that, is that our cash flow got much closer to zero at the low point, at least in the first year, and we'll see how that actually turns out in April and May, whether we ever meet any of the line of credit, or some, or all of the line of credit. We're certainly hoping for none, and, but we'll see how those decisions actually impact as the year goes on.
This one compared to the other one, it looks like, you know, the blue, the light blue down there, the optimized investments, you really don't have an opportunity to do that because.
Right, we don't have enough cash on hand to push anything out far enough that you can actually invest it more than a few days in the past.
Could you flip to the other one, the previous one, Betsy?
They will update this monthly, we'll summarize the current treasures reports, each one of what we've received in cash.
So the budget, what did, what numbers did they use? They used the.
They used our actual budget, our FY14 budget.
Okay, perfect, yeah.
And our trends of when we receive cash, when we have expenses, when payroll is, you know, we're a every-two-week payroll system, so anyway, our expenses are going out. They're using both the trends of our actual expense and revenue reports from the previous year, our annual financial report, audited numbers, plus our budget that you approved in September, they take all that and put it in. So certainly looking better, as you can see, we're not completely above the zero line, so there are still points in time when we could run low on cash, if not this year, in the future years. So we still have work ahead of us, but we certainly have gone in the right direction. So this may be a stupid question, but in a, a budget we just passed, they had it appearing, although very minimal surplus, how do we go below a line at all?
Because this is a cash flow analysis, is what you have on hand, and then you get it by.
Yeah, and some of the cash isn't available for all of your expenses, so you have money that you have to spend in only certain funds, so, such as bond repayment. We have money that we're carrying, cashing that technically, I can't use that money in any other area, so while I have that money there, it's not enough to offset many of the expenses that are occurring still throughout the year. And it really comes down to, because you've seen some of our charts, we get revenues in the summer, then they drop down, and we get very little revenues the rest of the year, and then we pick up again in May and June, and early taxes are coming in again. So there's only a couple of times in the year where we get significant revenues, and the rest of the year we're overspending compared to what we're receiving for that month. And it's just the timing of it works, that you run short in the April-May timeframe. But you end the June 30th in a, in a good state. Unfortunately, you're walking to school of finance, and that's the reality of where we live. Good question, though, is that, that's a great question.
I like, I, I know this doesn't make a difference to a lot of people, but I like the new finance, the formatting, the new financial statements, and I like the fact that you've added original budget, and then they give by chance an additional column needs to be added, amended budget, all the detail over there, I like that.
We will hope to not amend the budget. There are a lot of unknowns.
That's our goal.
So if there are any other questions, you're going to seek approval of the treasures report, we can go upstairs.
I think that helps you.
Thank you. A second, please. Second. Thank you. White soul?
Yes. Warley? Yes. Carter? Yes. Cut?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Peter Ryder?
Yes.
Nathan?
Yes. Next item is landfill.
So this is one that we wanted to make sure that we had an opportunity for the board to discuss, what will happen with the landfill proceeds. We sold the land, and legal is telling us it took approximately three thousand, give or take, we'll be closing costs and related fees, and so we just wanted to open it up for you all to have that conversation.
So it was seven seventy-three, right? They're grossing now, approximately, Patrick?
Forty-three acres times eighteen thousand.
Oh, yeah, okay, seven seventy-four, perfect. Oh, yeah, that's right there, yeah.
So we're anticipating a net receipt of about seven hundred seventy-one thousand dollars.
Well, Carrie, what's your opinion?
Well, you know, for a long time, we talked about wanting to use the funds for some sort of district office, you know, renovation or purchase. The struggle that we have is that we still continue to, across the district, we still look at, you know, our operating expenses, and are we going to have future operations? And every, every day that we kind of hear more about our general state aid, as well as other issues that, you know, income taxes, what's going to happen there, we're just listening to the legislation, the pension shift, the potential pension shift cost, that we, we, I personally feel like we need to talk about putting it in an operating fund, such as the F Fund, and talking about, you know, because we know, we know that the district priorities, and I think we all have a pretty good feel on what the priorities are for the district, and we've spelled those out the goals, even though we've not really confirmed those, we'll do that soon, but that we have priorities, and our community has priorities for, for what we can cut, and the difficult part for us is that the, the next step in reductions aren't going to be as easy. And so I, you know, tend to believe that we need to look at a possible, even though it's a one-time infusion of, of proceeds, that, that we can look at that as something that will help us in the future years because of the one-time infusion. You know, with that, it's not necessarily maybe popular with our office staff, because we'd be stuck here, you know, we'd be staying here, but, but the, the time is a difficult one for us to talk about, either purchasing or renovating. And we're, you know, maybe we can look at some, some minor renovations to this office and staying here. That's just, you know, the reality of, the least popular thing to do in a district is to look at corporate office space, and we're trying to make this fit our needs programmatically, and I think we still need to do that, but we need to make sure that we focus on, on the operating expenses.
My, my thoughts on that are, personally, in light of the way things have happened with backup funding and all that sort of thing. In my own personal opinion, I, I would like to see, see us not touch this money at all, and have it go back into sort of our safety then type option. What fund that is and being, I, I have no idea. But we've, we've got a long way to deplete funds. It would be nice to see us come up with creative ways not to touch it. It may not be possible, but it would be nice not to touch it. From a district office perspective, in my own line, I also never thought we'd use this money for a district office. I was trying, in my mind, I want to see us figure out a way to use referendum funding if we can, which we.
You can't refer it?
Yes.
You can't, one thing about that, you can't purchase a new building with referendum. You can renovate, you can do renovations, you can't purchase with referendum.
Correct. And that, again, brings us back to where I don't feel like we've actually truly vetted all possible options for you guys to, to either temporarily or partially renovate your situation. I mean, that's just kind of where I'm at. I personally'd like to see us not touch this, if at all possible.
Actually, from an accounting theory standpoint, Brandon, that, that's the most prudent thing to do, because you have land, which is a long-term asset, we should just, in my opinion, put it in the educational fund balance and leave it there, and don't use it for just normal operating expenses, because then all you're doing is just funding, funding, you know, your operational expenses, which really probably need to be caught, we need to build off that educational fund balance. And so I'm, I'm in total agreement with you, that we put it in there and it's, we leave it.
Could you review, once goes in the Ed Fund, what we, where it can go?
Once it goes in the Ed Fund, it becomes part of your Ed Fund, and it becomes part of any of your primary operating, I mean, most of our fund expenses are in the education fund, salaries, benefits, supplies, materials, everything to support the educational program. So it becomes commingled with all those funds, it is, in essence, wherever, just like the tax revenues, it just becomes part of that fund, and the district has discretion from the board, that they're approval, how to spend those funds. If you're wanting to not spend it, then your savings account is your working cash account. If you're wanting to not spend it, then your savings account is your working cash account just to finance that thing. So it's still your money. It's still there, and you're invested in, you're saving, you're using it for a rainy day down the road. And then there are guidelines on how you can access that money out of the working cash fund to support specific costs or expenses under ed fund, O&M fund, transportation fund later, when a certain expense becomes necessary. So if you're looking to save it and not spend it, it's in your working cash fund. If you're looking to potentially use it for a program, then be able to put it in any of those other operating funds at O&M Transportation and immediately becomes accessible and is available in your market for any expenses, there's a way to hold it in there.
Okay, so my question is, how did all those educational, how did that educational fund balance get built up over time, you know, eight, like...
Well, I don't know, I don't know the history, but, you know, they certainly...
Can't you just put it in the educational fund and kind of leave it as...
And then you just talk about when you budget, then you just...
You back out the $700,000.
Those on the outside looking in...
It makes more sense to you if that's the thought.
And you have negotiations coming up, and they're going to say, well, you have access, you have available funds, and we want to ex increase.
Okay.
Because you have available funds.
So, but when we see the balance of $700,000 in working cash, we know we can't spend it.
We cannot. You cannot charge any expense to the working cash.
You have to make a transfer.
You have to. You have to abate the working cash fund and close it, and then transfer all the remaining proceeds to whatever funds you're allowed to channel to for those, and then it becomes permanently part of those funds. And then later, by resolution, you can reestablish your working cash fund if that's the board's desire down the road.
How would a short-term borrower be affected by it either?
Similar as we did in spring. If you keep it in the working cash fund, and then your cash flow falls short at any point in time, you have bills that you need to pay, that's what you borrow first from your working cash fund, because you have cash there that can't otherwise be spent on any one other permanent expense.
Would access that?
You transfer it to there to cover short-term cash flow needs, and then when the revenues have been reinstated via tax receipts most likely, then you reauthorize the repayment of that loan, which is exactly what we did this year. So then you still have a running balance of that full amount in the end in that working cash fund.
And just monitor the time that billions amount is.
Yes.
And none of our tax money goes into working cash?
No, that's not true, because we do levy for working cash. That's how we maintain sort of a nominal amount. We levy a little bit into that fund every year, just so that you're sort of slowly building up that working cash fund again, so for unknown, unforeseen, rainy day type of situations. So we do every year levy a little bit on our tax.
But the majority of our tax money goes into...
Majority is that fund, literally.
Can that money be used to pay off any debt?
It can go in, you have an avenue to get it where you need to go. You first may put it in the ed fund, and then you may authorize an ed fund transfer to the debt service, which isn't uncommon to pay a debt or give a mortgage, eventually it could be.
So that's an option. Another, I'd like to get a fund idea, but that property was originally bought to build an elementary school, and since we took all the money out of the ed fund to build GES, kind of makes sense to stick it back in there.
I think, you know, I'd like to correct this a little bit, that it's not about what's available for negotiations or what people see or where things are. I think it's a philosophical analysis that should be, which you'd be looking at. I think if you're talking about putting it in the ed fund, then you're talking about, you know, avoiding some potential cuts in the ed fund because of this, or building back up, you know, or building back up what was taken for GES costs. But working cash then would be like considering a payment. So I'd kind of like to take off the table that, you know, conversation about who sees what and where it is. It's all disparate money, so it's not about that. It's not about what we're doing for negotiations. It should be about where we want to use the funds, where it needs to be, what our goal is for these funds.
Or keep, right, exactly. Or keep the funds untouched.
It's right. Yeah, what's the idea?
Well, it's sort of like your home. If you put the money, your home budget, if you put the money in the savings account, you'll think twice before taking it out. If you put it right into your checking account, it can get...
Sure.
...winked all the way, at least to those of mine.
Would you leave the ed fund to the checking account and the working cash in the savings account, or is that...
It's a good example.
Yeah.
But for working cash, you can move it anywhere?
There are guidelines as to where and how you can move it, but, yeah, you should get it where your expenses are.
That includes debt service?
Roundabout way, yes.
Does he move it from there to the ed fund to debt service? And when do we expense the proceeds?
We're looking at closing early November.
Early November.
Will that be before the final rents do then?
Yes.
So there'll be $200,000 in May to come off.
Correct. Is this before the 15th of November?
So a later discussion occurs as to... A later discussion occurs as to the actual final...
Right.
Disposition.
So you don't have a disposition plan?
Yep.
Right.
So the money will temporarily be put someplace until we have the final disposition.
May not cash the check until you've told them where to put it.
Well, there's a lot of interest on it.
Yeah, I was going to say... School improvement meeting. Yep. Yeah, and that's what PMA does for us, is that they'll talk to us about where our investments are. So regardless of what you decide, they take that into consideration as where they fill your, the blue section for the short-term investments, and they do that for us, or I think it was yellow and then the blue for the longer. But they'll do that automatically for you regardless of where it was. Okay.
Anything else on this for the seat? Okay, thank you, Karen. On the new business school maintenance grant.
This year, again, we're eligible for a school maintenance grant. It is a matching grant of $50,000, which means we have to have a project worth $100,000 for the grant to apply the $50,000 in grant. We have applied. I wanted to bring forward, and I'm recommending that we apply those against restroom renovations at GMS. Those restroom renovations were on $300,000. At Ball Elementary, when we did their renovations this past summer, and almost every summer that we do renovations in restaurants, because there's asbestos, there's piping, there's fixtures, that once you start tearing into them, you never know what you're going to get into. And as a result of this year's construction, we did have some overruns. So we're asking this coming summer to apply this $50,000 grant against those costs. So defer $50,000 worth of cost or pick up whatever overruns that they have at GMS.
Any questions?
Can you explain defer the $50,000, or is it just, if it's a grant for $50,000?
It's a grant for $50,000. The project has to be $100,000.
So we're not deferring?
Has to be $100,000.
Deferring, deferring. So...
So the total, I just, you know, you were, I was writing down some numbers. So basically, it sounds like applied to the restroom, the total cost of that was like $300,000, correct?
That's correct.
So just putting that in by itself would take care of things as far as getting $50,000 back?
Yes. If there's no cost overruns, then we can use that money and apply it against the $300,000, and then once left over from that $300,000 can be applied against other projects that have overruns on the other projects.
Because this was originally paid out of the $35 million bond proceeds?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's going to be $35 billion and then $50,000.
Correct.
Any other questions?
Okay, thanks, David.
You know, so when you do this application, there must be some sort of piece of paper that you attach that says work items section?
Absolutely. It's a part of...
We don't have that.
It's part of an electronic form that I can't print out.
Oh, you can't print it?
Go straight to the state.
But, you know, $300,000, we know, you know how many of this and how many of that and that sort of thing, that $300,000 costs.
That's all part of the access.
That's right. It's all, we have that in black and white already.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. The motion then to approve applying for this school maintenance grant and the amount of $50,000, which will be used for restroom renovations at GMS, has been helped before estimated cost of $300,000, and it will be completed prior to school commencing in August of 2014. The motion to approve that. Thank you. A second, please. A second. Thank you, Brandon.
Worley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Tuck?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Whitezel? Yes. Nissis?
Yes. All right, thank you. Next, doing the communications roundtable, we're having a roundtable discussion.
Does anybody else?
Yeah. Okay, the first thing is, Jill, sorry, I lost where you're sitting. Long day. You know, we used to always rotate the policy committee quarterly. Are you still planning on doing that? Were you, or does the board want to...
I'll put to the board.
Okay, we had previously rotated the members of the policy committee every quarter, and I just want to know what you guys, if that's something you guys want to do or not, and if you want to maintain it as such, I mean, as to that, what the policy committee can do now, so.
I'm happy to serve for the year, but, I mean, if the rest of the board wants it to go on quarterly?
We, the reason that we had done it quarterly because, you know, the board... I mean, no, I didn't, I never...
Sorry, I was doing, now Jill's doing it.
Well, let me volunteer then, though.
Well, I'll do it for the whole year.
Yeah, I was just telling it really good.
It wasn't that we didn't, it was, it was just, maybe it was just, it was, yeah.
I would be glad to do it.
So can I, do you want me to be on for the rest of the year? I'm happy to, unless somebody wants to take my... I just need to know who to send emails to, so.
And secondly, my second thing was, Susan, I really appreciate all of the detailed emails that you frequently send us. I don't mind it, but I would request that you not make assumptions about me or in those emails, because sometimes we're wrong, and, you know, I know, it just worries me that these are public emails, really, and that, you know, if things are in the emails that are wrong, then, you know, we get bores or something like that, and just...
I appreciate that.
So, thanks.
And in that regard, I would like to correct a recent statement in the Chatham Clarion regarding my voting record. And granted, the subject of the February 1st meeting is quite confusing. There are really two versions, version one and version two. I was not involved in the voting of version one, which was the initial meeting originally labeled as a closed session. I wasn't on the board at that time, and therefore I could not vote on that version one. However, on version two, the set of minutes that were changed from closed session to open session, I did approve those as the Ball Chatham attorney was intimately involved in this process. I did vote on that. Furthermore, as regards to the statement made in the Thursday edition of October 24th of the Chatham Clarion, that all board members were notified of the meeting referring the February 1st meeting, I don't feel comfortable with this statement. I have reviewed all of the corroborating evidence provided by the administration to date, and I personally do not feel that that statement is warranted at this time.
The statement that, or that all board members were notified of the meeting?
Correct. Excluding, that doesn't even reference Mr. Tuck. I'm just excluding Steve Tuck entirely in that statement.
Well, Jim would have been the one to notify everyone. Did you notify everyone?
Yep. Everybody was notified. Again, Steve was notified to come in and talk to us, but the circumstances being at that time, that's how I felt that should be handled.
Well, we're not going to continue this discussion forever and ever, but there are specifically requirements for notification under the Overmeetings Act.
Are you saying it was an Overmeetings Act violation again?
I'm just saying that there are specific requirements for the notification.
We've had two lawyers take a look at it, and there was not a Overmeetings Act violation.
If they see the corroborating evidence for the notification of the individual board members?
I'm not sure what you're talking about.
Carrie, would you like to elaborate on the email that you sent to me, or would you prefer that I summarize?
Yeah. You mean, you want to say? Yeah, I sent it to everyone. It was in response to a FOIA request from Stacy Klein in regards to how members were notified. So Susan, they asked it. Alan Hurley and John Quater have been asked to give documentation to respond to that FOIA, and so I sent that out today. Is that what I mean?
Right. Do we know if they were actually notified? Because as of the information that I have reviewed, I cannot conclusively determine if they were notified. But how would you know if Jim called us? How would I know?
Yeah.
How would you know when Jim called and said, "We are having this meeting"?
Well, the assumption would be that if Carrie asked the remaining two board members to respond to this very request, they would do so. But they did not respond to Carrie's request to confirm that.
They didn't call and say that they didn't get notified of the meeting?
Correct. That is what I'm saying. I am saying I am not comfortable with the statement that all board members were notified of the meeting.
Well, I would like to say I'm comfortable with that, because Mr. Nissis has said he called everyone. He calls everyone before every board meeting. I see why this would have not been the same procedure, because it's the procedure he does all the time.
Let me say, too, that I saw what was in the Clarion last week, and I immediately called the Clarion and told them that it's not what I was meaning to say, and that obviously you could vote on it because you weren't part of the board then. But what I was trying to say is that if there were any problems with minutes, any problems with what was going on at that meeting, all board members voted yes to approve minutes of the meeting.
Versions one, all existing board members at the time approved versions one and two, correct?
Version, I don't know what you're talking about, versions one and two.
Well, versions one is when it was a closed session. Version two is when it was an opening meeting and the wording had...
Whoever was eligible to vote at the time voted yes to approve those minutes.
Correct.
And I think that if there was any issues with the minutes at that time or what went on at the meetings, that they might have been brought up at that time when those meetings were being voted, or those meeting minutes were being voted on when they went on.
Anything else?
I said two things.
Yes, sir.
Tomorrow night's thing, were we going to post that?
I'll check.
I didn't know if there would be more...
And in those things, it's not a board meeting. It's a meeting that can be attended by board members. It does not necessarily have to be posted.
Okay. Well, I mean, I assume, so I just...
Just to be honest with you, we talked about that.
We do it most of the time, just as a statement.
Right. And then, and I don't know if this is even warranted, but is there a possibility, can we, can we hold a meeting that's only agenda items roundtable?
Well, I think that says it's free for all. I, I mean--
The roundtable, I think, was originally set to any question. Was there not just on the--
I think we'd be looking at that, looking for something like that, if we're going to talk about, you know, relationships, things have gone on, that sort of thing. It's more of a board self-evaluation, where we have to have then, then have somebody from the IASB in attendance at those kinds of meetings.
Which essentially--
Which is--
I mean, if, well, I don't know.
I guess, to clarify why I'm asking. I'm, and I'm learning, but I'm not used to being a part of a board where you can't talk together in between meetings and your work. And we can't do that. And so, as we come down, and getting our information a week earlier, by the way, is helping me and Tom. But when you come down to a weekend, or even a week for that matter, as we're trying to clarify what's on the agenda, and then we kind of, and then, so we berate you guys' emails, trying to figure out what the heck's going on. And then we come to the meeting, and while I'm looking at the clock going, do I even want to bring it up? You know, because we weren't, we're here for three hours, and I didn't know if there was a way, somehow in a more candid fashion, that in between them, you just, you know, this is what we're thinking about, what's going on in this arena, but we're in an open environment instead of, it was just an idea to throw out there.
Well, you know, Springfield, don't hate me, Carrie, but they meet every week, and they--
Well, I'm not trying to add to people's agendas, but, you know, I--
But, you know-- So you're thinking like a retreat format, or?
No. I mean, like, last meeting, we went through some stuff that, when I went through the board docs, and some of our conversations and inter, or some of the information and reports and whatnot, I thought I had a pretty clear idea of why I was voting on it, what I was voting on. And then I thought of a thousand questions after the vote.
Right.
And it was only because I was thinking in my head, well, this is, this is the way it was presented in the board docs, that that's not clearly the way the feeling was on part of one or two board members at the time. And then some of that information that came out, I would have liked to have dealt with it more, but I, you know, like, I was processing it at the time.
And the other thing that we can do is, if you're uncomfortable with a conversation or with a decision or something, we can always table something, for the most part. I mean, there are some things that we need to do quickly on, but if we need to, Lake Jill's is a good example of the pre-k conversation. Nobody's ready necessarily to make a decision on that tonight, so we can always table it. Maybe that was one that--
Well, I mean, there was no, your pre-k situation was pretty generically presented in board docs, so--
Right.
Yeah, obviously knew we were going to be basically just discussing.
Here, yeah.
I mean, one of my items was a personnel item, and in board docs, it said administration recommends, but I could tell from, you know, body language, and how, who was asking what questions, that some administration might not have clearly been okay with it, and was using order to try to bet out all possible problems in this situation. And then after I finished, I'm like, well, should I ask this question, or should I ask that question? But with the information that I was presented with, you know, in the sense that we're all saying we want to trust administration, the board docs told me that basically it was okay to vote for that.
And there's some times that, and I know, six months into this, there's been a lot happening in six months.
It's been fun.
So, yeah, I can understand that, but it's, I mean, even if it says administration recommends it, that doesn't, I mean, that should not cut off any questioning at all about anything.
But what I'm saying is, looking at it on the outset, I didn't have a problem. What you could tell, and the wording was such that I felt it was, no one had a problem. They could, and then I didn't think of the right questions to ask, or, you know, discussion, and then a decision made, or maybe I shouldn't have voted, if it appealed. And I'll get the hang of it, but--
And maybe if by the time we get to vote, yeah, I mean, as Carrie said, especially with the personnel thing, some of them, they're very hard, it's not really one that we have to vote to approve of because of school board, but, you know, on other types of personnel things--
And that was just an example.
Right. We have to learn, we each have to learn to be brave enough to say people, it's just that, you know, because we only meet one place, it's hard to--
Well, I guess that's my, that's another problem too, I have, and you can't get around it. You basically just blew them off. If we could have been talking about it, we would have been able, certain things, we'd be able to vote on it, it's that matter. Sometimes it takes months, just because--
Because we only meet once a month?
Yeah.
I mean, the possibility is not twice, not to me, twice a month for every month, but interspersed, because sometimes, I think it's, there's a lot of topics, and a month go by, a month goes by, and sort of--
It's kind of the intent of a special board meeting, although, you know, it doesn't necessarily shake out that way, but like, for a school curriculum lands, to have more, you know, open time dialogue, we can sit down at the, you know, area down here, so that you can kind of have that conversation, but it doesn't always shake out the way you want it. You know what I mean? Yeah, it's pretty focused on a topic that we just had a hint of.
And it's just for discussion, I'm not trying--
No, I understand what you're saying, because I don't like, I don't like the discussions to go on evening, because you don't, you don't read what body language, you don't get it.
Right.
Ask the question, well, what did you mean by this? You don't get to have that conversation.
Because we can't-- Because you're not a clarify, we're not discussing it--
No, no.
Right, right. And we don't want to get into any email discussion. I think that is, I think in order to be able to fully understand where everybody is coming from, I think a meeting on which we can talk about it is better than the email conversation evening.
We are, you know, we're obviously are restricted from, on some things with discussions, for example, you know, if a couple of board members on the phone, I mean, we could, you could talk to each one individually, but then you're going to spend hours and hours on it. So, it's really kind of a juggling act, trying to make sure that you got the information. And obviously, like, some of those things are just natural, you got to do them, do them, but I think I know what you're talking about, and, you know, there's, but there's a lot of history in some of these things too, that, that as a new board member, you don't necessarily know what's going on.
Right.
And having young kids in the district, as opposed to the older kids in the district that seem to come through.
Well, I think that's why there are segments.
Yes, yeah.
To bring all of those perspectives, and the discussion among all seven of the segments is valuable.
Well, I'm in favor of setting up a second meeting in December, because I guess I'm, I feel like, I write a lot of emails, I would prefer not to. I think about the things I have questions, I would just as soon talk about it verbally, because we can't correspond among us all, we can't do that. So I'm in favor of a second meeting in December, or if that's such a crazy month, and a second meeting at the first opportunity.
January, we have one next Monday, so two in November, two in January.
Two in March.
It's probably the other month.
Well, then, well, when we do the second one, then, and I can't remember, like, when we did facilities, did we, was there a portion of that agenda where we just also--
Good, yeah, you can, and you can do a roundtable, the thing that we wouldn't want to do is have any action items, other than what the topic is, you know, because we don't want the public to ask, to see like a special board meeting and transportation, and then there'd be some action items. So we would just do kind of open conversation about some topic, or just roundtable topics, yeah, so that it's not kind of a surprise to people.
But, but anyway, if we did a roundtable, you can bring anything that you want.
Yeah, as Carrie said, just--
So if we have two meetings a month, would you be able to do that? It sounds like we have two meetings a month in January, February, March.
November, January.
Every other month.
Yeah.
Which is awesome, but as long as when we do the special meetings, some point in the special meeting is not only just that focus of facilities.
Well, and also, also, we don't have to necessarily, I mean, if it's something that's targeted or focused, not just, you know, whatever, but it's, we can have that as a SIP, half of it is SIP, half of it is something else. I mean, we've done that at other conferences too.
Well, and I know when--
It was that important.
When roundtable was, was established, it was several boards ago that established the rotating, or just what you're saying, is to have that opportunity to discuss things. And I know at the time it was set up, a kind of a ground rule was there, and I think it's, it's a good one, that the purpose is not to blind tie.
Right.
It's to discuss an issue that, you know--
So can it be an opportunity to bring up something that we've approved in the past months to get some more clarification on?
Sure thing.
I've been getting a lot of questions about the lights that were removed from GIS. Were them our lights, or?
Inside or outside?
Outside lights at GIS.
The athletic field lights.
Athletic field.
We negotiated something with Chatham to remove all the athletic field lights.
Yes, we did.
Were them our lights?
Who paid for the lights, originally? The lights on the baseball field or the soccer field?
I believe the ones on the baseball field.
The ones that were removed at GIS?
Whatever we negotiated with Chatham to save us $20,000.
Honestly, I can't tell. I don't know who owned the lights on it. They're on our property, I thought we owned them. They were, I assume they're ours. But the, we had, there was some issue with the poles, weren't there, out there? Yeah, the poles were condemned, and we had to bring them back to safety. We had two architects, no, one architect, two structural engineers over the poles, and the decision was made with the ability to remove the poles. It would have cost us $20,000 had the contractor come in and pull them out. The village volunteered to pull the lights out, and with the provisos, that they took the lights.
So they can do what they want with them?
They have them, yes.
Where the poles were dangerous, you're saying?
Say again?
The poles were dangerous?
Yes, the poles were condemned.
By that letter that was--
By a doctor of structural engineering from U of I, by a local structural engineer and by our architect.
And that letter was the one that you--
Yeah, I pulled it from the character--
What I have in front of me is from Zellers.
That's dated in '09?
Zeller started the conversation and went to structural engineer local. He brought in a supplementary expert from the University of Illinois.
And that letter is dated in '09? Is that right?
Yes.
Was there attempt in '09 to remove them, and we just didn't, or?
Was there an attempt to remove them in '09? Did we try to remove them in '09? Anyway-- And what was the reason behind that?
I mean, I'm just curious, is the four-year gap between if they're bad, and why didn't we wait four years to get rid of them?
We were trying to find money to pay to get rid of them. So they were removed at no expense to us, and then Chatham? Chatham baseball, or somebody like that got the lights? We budgeted in the, the '09, excuse me, the $9.3 million, I think we budgeted $25,000, $25,000, and that was based on, that's by a local contractor. We asked Chatham if they had an interest to save ourselves some money, and they said they did, so we--
Now they're in their possession, is that right?
That's correct.
And I asked them in a follow-up to this question, because I got questions as well, and the village is going to possibly reuse them, however, they need to do some work to them? Have you heard this?
Yeah, the poles, not only were they, the poles themselves were defective, that they were leaning at such an angle, the lights had to be re-aimed, and we don't have night games anymore, anyway, according to our athletic directors. So there was no need for the poles or the lights, and being defective, we decided to put them around.
Were the lights, did the lights belong to CBSI?
That's what I understood after getting further, and what Del McCord told me, that he would be willing to give those lights back to the CBSI, but it would probably go on their fields, because CBSI uses their fields. So he said that his recollection was that the lights belonged to CBSI, and so he said that he would, he could give them back to CBSI, but that they use their fields, so if they're placed on their fields, that it essentially would be CBSI using those lights as well.
Yeah, I have no paperwork tells me--
Whose they were.
Who the lights belonged to.
I don't either, right?
Yeah, I mean, if it's on our property, I guess I should make the assumption it belonged to us. Anything else? You okay?
Well, if they get their lights back on the land at hand that they play on, that seems like a good resolution, doesn't it?
To the lights?
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely.
That's what Del was saying.
I think that's a good resolution.
Anything else? Next item is future meetings. See you next Monday. Meeting 6:30 here. IASB, the conference in Chicago, and then our regular board meeting November 25th.
This is really goal setting? Is it the goals we talked about tonight, or we include those for a different time?
No, those are more in terms of school improvement planning.
We'll include your achievement goals as part of the presentation, we'll incorporate that. I think Carrie's going to send us dates.
Right, I have known that I'd send the dates out.
Okay. Any other dates we should know about? Last, or the next item here is opportunity for visitors to address the board concerning any topic, if they wish to address the board. No, then, I stand the motion to adjourn. Thank you. Thank you. That's always a quick discussion. Thank you.